Lisa, if you want to just let us know when you're ready to start. You're good to go? Commissioner, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, morning. All right. Well, it is 9:00 AM on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, and we call the order. This regular business meeting of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners. So if you would please stand with me for the invocation.
Lord Jesus, we just say that we're glad that you're here. Thank you that you are all wise, all knowing, and we just want to say we commit our county to you. Thank you that we can live here, that we can be part of what you're doing. And I bless the commissioners. I bless every decision that they're making, that they would have your heart, your mind, and that they would always see that their dependency needs to be on you and to hear you and what you're saying. And we bless the businesses, every one of them, Father. We pray that they would thrive. If other people, other places around aren't, we just pray that this would be a place that your favor is on, that they would have wisdom on running their business in the school systems, they would have wisdom. We bless every family, Father, that they would know you, that they would have the wisdom to live in this time that is so confusing. We just pray peace over this county in Jesus' name. And we bless you today that we can come to you and commit everything. And we just say, Kingdom of God, come. Will of God be done in this county as it is in heaven. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Corn, would you be willing to make a motion to adopt the Order of Agenda?
I would be willing to do that. Based on the information before us, I move to adopt the Order of Agenda as presented.
I'll step down in a second.
No discussion?
Any discussion?
I don't think so.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Onto the consent agenda.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Step down in a second. And I'll just make the note that for invoices over $5,000, we have an amount for noxious weeds of $15,111.45 associated with the purchase of herbicides and similar materials. Any questions from the public? Okay. Any discussion amongst the board? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the clerk.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, everybody. Before you, I have fiscal year 25 claims batch number 35 totaling $1,013,299.44. Of that, the big items are Roden Bridge has 273,000 made up of diesel, rock gravel, which is lion's share, heavy equipment, 50,000 type of thing. We have about 60,000 for solid waste, 16,000 contracted labor, 33,000 in, I mean, contracted labor, 16,000 in hazardous waste. And then we have airport grant at about 300,000, and that's the stuff we front up and will be reimbursed for that. And then, of course, our medical and pharmacy coming in at about 218,000.
Thank you for the summary.
You bet.
Any questions from the board?
I have none.
Do you like to make a motion?
Questions from the public or?
Well, I want to make a motion. Yeah, if you want to make the motion first.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of FY '25 claims in batch number 35 totaling $1,013,299.44.
Step down in a second. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, any questions from the board? And then discussion, sorry, not questions.
Or that either.
We've done those two. All right, then roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. District Court has something next, and they are not here. Jessica was going to do it for them, but she's going to continue to work through this time, so I'm going to do it for them. Basically, they have unanticipated revenue going into the District Court Fund that they need to use for maintenance. And so that's what this is about. So I'm going to read the resolution for you. Whereas Idaho Code 3165 provides that Bonner County Commissioners may adjust the budget as adopted, provided that there shall be no increase in anticipated property taxes. And whereas Bonner County received unanticipated revenue from the state of Idaho in the sum of $44,681, that's more than they're going to transfer, by the way. These monies are not yet earmarked for specific use. Whereas these payments of unanticipated revenue could be used to help the security project that has been started in fiscal year '25 and will not be finished until '26. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Bonner County, Idaho authorize the clerk to open District Court fiscal year '25 budget and increase the object lines 0067430, building repair and maintenance by $10,100.
And so clerk, if you could please expand on the, is the reason that while the total anticipated funds exceed the budget change is being requested of the $10,100, is because of the multi-year project duration and how it gets split amongst budget years? And/or other funding available?
You've already taken me outside the rail on this one. Let's see. They are trying to, yeah, I don't know. There's $10,100 needed to finish the security enhancement projects, which is going over budget or in addition to the budget, I don't know. However, with the unanticipated revenue, and Jessica can chime in.
So it's a project that they want to get started and completed in this fiscal year because they have the unanticipated revenue. They talked about it a little bit in our budget workshop. It was one of the enhancements that they have listed for next fiscal year, but if they can use this unanticipated revenue to fund the project, then they won't need to budget for it next year.
So then Jessica, is the reason for the difference between the unanticipated revenue being a little over $44,000 versus the line item adjustment request of being just over $10,000, is that because they only need to utilize a portion of the funds of that unanticipated revenue for the project?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
I was almost there.
Really close. Do you have any questions, Commissioner? Are you prepared to make a motion?
I am. I move to approve resolution number 25-36 authorizing the clerk to open the District Court B budget for the sum of $10,100 as detailed in the resolution.
I'll step down in a second. Any comments or questions from the public? If you could please use the microphone, sir, and please state your name and residency for the record.
Robert Frank. Is this on? Robert Frank, Bonner County resident for the record. What happens to the rest of the funds that aren't being used?
Great question. So what happens is we receive those funds and they get put in the bank. It's a matter of, so we have two separate things. We've got the money in the bank and we have the budget that we can spend. If we don't put it in the budget, we can't spend it. It stays in the bank, but we can't spend it. So what we're doing is saying we are going to be able to use some of that money in the budget to spend. The rest of it stays in the bank, and that'll be used towards figuring out next year's budget, what we can spend.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did you see any hands up on the line? No. Okay. Any other deliberation amongst the board?
I have none.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Clerk, thank you, Jessica. Next up, we have Justice Services.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Director.
Three items this morning. First one is request to destroy some records. Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center currently holds facility records for the years 2016 through 17, which have been reviewed and deemed temporary records needing to be retained not less than two years. These records include things like shift summaries, cell location, facility search reports, transport sheets, transport vehicle logs, guest registries, handwritten logs, cash logs, grievance reports, fire drill reports, maintenance request reports, and fleet request reports. Idaho Code Section 31-871(c) authorizes the destruction of temporary records after a retention period of not less than two years.
I have no questions. I don't either this time.
All right. Based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution number 2025-37, the destruction of Bonner County Juvenile Detention Facility Temporary Records as described above, held by the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center for the years 2022 and older pursuant to Idaho Code 31-871(c) as approved by legal.
Step down in a second. Any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Lady?
Yes, thank you. Jim Lady Spokane, just curious on the grievance records, if they're destroyed after two years, is there any way to find out the history of grievances after that? Or is that completely wiped clean from all personnel records and everything?
This is just the paper copies of it. We will still have them electronically, but these records date back to 2016, 2017, so they're seven, eight years old.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments or questions? All right, seeing none, any deliberation amongst the board?
I have none.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Second item. It's recommended that the Board of County Commissioners approve the cost for Phase Two of the replacement of the surveillance system at Justice Services. As set forth in the attached invoice from NTECTEL in the amount of $46,791.37. Payment of Phase Two of the replacement will be made from Probation Services FY '24-25 budget, account number 00661-7900, cigarette tax carryover.
All right, questions? I'll just make the statement, I appreciate having been able to tour and see the work that's been going on and the level of quality and cleanliness of the Phase One work and how they've been progressing. So appreciate seeing that that's been well performed and well managed.
Great, thank you.
Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner?
Based on information before us, I move to approve the cost of Phase Two for replacement of surveillance system at Justice Services in the amount of $46,791.37 as set forth above.
Step down in a second. Any public comment or question? Seeing none, any further deliberation? Okay. Roll call vote, please. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. As to the prior motion, which I neglected to mention. All right, and your third item, please.
Yeah, my final item, yes. It's recommended that the Board of County Commissioners approve the memorandum of agreement to support clinical services in juvenile detention as approved by the auditors in legal. The purpose of the memorandum is set forth in the conditions under which the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections provides funding in the amount of $35,968 for the '25-'26 fiscal year to pay part of the salary paid to the detention clinician which is employed by Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center. Just a little backstory on that. So in 20, about 15 years ago, the Department of Juvenile Corrections ran a pilot project to put clinicians inside the juvenile detention centers in Idaho. And it was an overwhelming success. We saw kids getting resources in the community that they weren't previously getting. We saw recidivism rates drop considerably because they were now getting the services that they needed. So after that pilot project ended, they did fund and put clinicians in every single detention center in the state of Idaho. And so this is just to renew that agreement. We, this pays for part of his salary, the rest of his salary comes out of Juvenile Corrections Act fund. So we have a licensed clinical practitioner counselor in our facility that costs, or the Bonner County taxpayers, nothing, because it's all funded through JCA and the clinician project, so.
Thank you for the background information.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Clear data.
Thank you. Want to make?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the MOA to support clinical services in juvenile detention facilities for the 2025-2026 fiscal year as set forth above.
Step down in a second. Any public question or comment? Seeing none, any deliberation?
I have none.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Director. Sounds like fun. You too. All right, Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you, Bill Wilson, for the record. Before you today is an item that I brought back to you after a few weeks of work that I've spent on this. If you recall, a couple of weeks ago, I came before you asking for a renewal of our contract agreement with Westlaw for the provision of legal software services for the Prosecutor's Office. And at that time, we had a quoted amount of $4,150 per month, and the board asked me to solicit a quote from a competing firm, see if we could get a better rate, and I have done that. The, actually used a lower quote from LexisNexis to negotiate with Westlaw, and they were willing to give us a renewed quote that has a teaser rate for the remainder of this year at $500 per month, which is huge savings. And then at January 1st, the monthly rate would go to about $2,600 per month, and that's a difference, it's a big savings. If we were to accept that quote, we would save roughly $25,000 this calendar year and then $19,000 per year thereafter. And so I'm very, I hate to give you guys any credit, but you did actually, that there was a good idea to solicit some, a different quote. The quote from LexisNexis was less than the one that I'm presenting to you today for Westlaw, but I did poll the office. Westlaw is a superior product, so there is a reason for the difference in value. We also have that same product that is in use at the court, and so we want to have uniformity between our office and theirs, so we're kind of looking at the same material. So there is a difference between the LexisNexis quote and the one that I'm presenting to you today for approval, but I think there is a justification for that. And given the fact that we've been able to carve off so much from what they originally proposed, we will be saving a lot of money over what I originally brought to you. So the proposed motion is to approve the updated quote from Lexis, again, for $500 per month for the remainder of this calendar year, and then moving to $2,621 per month thereafter.
Thank you for following through on that. It pays off, doesn't it?
It does. I was surprised at how much they were willing to amend their quote once they realized that I was giving incredibly threatening to leave them. So that worked out really well.
Doesn't work every time, but it's worth trying.
It's worth trying.
Appreciate the effort, too. I don't have any questions. I think everything that was presented was thorough, and I appreciate the apples, to apples, if you would, comparison to understand that the other product is not the same and that it's a value-based decision as well as a cost-based decision. And the understanding that there's the alignment between the courts and the Prosecutor's Office is also valuable information, so. I'm ready to make a motion. Okay, if you would, that'd be great.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the Westlaw contract renewal as discussed and authorize the chair to sign administratively.
Step down in a second. Public comment or question?
John Dupree, resident of the county. I wanted to make sure I'm understanding something here. You were talking about $500 a month. And then you said it would jump up to $2,500 a month? Or was that supposed to be a year?
No, no. So what we pay now is almost $3,800 a month or so. So the $500 a month is like a teaser rate, something that to kind of encourage us to renew. The $2,600 will be the new monthly rate, but it's still a huge reduction from what we're paying today.
Thank you.
Yes.
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident for the record. I wish to thank the commissioners for requesting that, you know, Bill Wilson go back and look at it. It does prove that, you know, at least letting them be aware that there is, you know, other options out there gives them that opportunity, both for, you know, the Prosecutor's Office and for the citizens to have substantial savings, because that is a big substantial savings. And the recommendations that you commissioners have given for other departments to do the same thing, I hope they follow through and get success.
Thank you. Competition in a free market economy is a beautiful thing.
Yep.
Any further public comment or question? Seeing none, any deliberation?
I have none.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just go back to, I really, I think it's a value decision, and so I think the savings is great in being able to stay within the better software package and maintain alignment with the courts is, in my mind, justifiable reason to spend more than what the quote would be from LexisNexis since we're getting a better product. Okay, then, roll call vote, please. Yes. Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Wilson? Parks and Waterways Director.
Morning, everybody. Mazzoler, Parks and Waterways Director. This morning, we're going to need or looking for a decision on the Fairgrounds Park. Parks and Waterways has been mowing it just for health and safety reasons. Now we're looking for money to come out of contingency. So I have four line items before you in the packet, one for fuel, sewage, tools, and incidentals. And so if we're going to continue to take care of this park through the end of summer until a more long-term plan can be made, then we should go ahead and move that money into the account so we can continue taking care of it until a decision can be made.
So just a brief background on this, the Fairgrounds was maintaining it before, and they notified the county that they were no longer going to be maintaining that park.
Correct.
And the city of Sandpoint built the park and then turned it over to Bonner County to maintain. So therefore, I do believe it is our responsibility to maintain that park if Fairgrounds is choosing to no longer maintain it.
Yeah, I believe the city of Sandpoint sent over some histories that, it sounded like, based on what I read, is that it was to be taken over by Fairgrounds. That has since changed under direction of the Fair Board, and their direction is to give it to us. And like I said, this is just for us to take care of it this summer until we can make a more long-term decision, because there's a lot more outstanding maintenance with electrical and water issues there. And this is going to be enough money to basically pick up the trash, give people a portable toilet, which seems appropriate, given that it's a playground. Yeah. And just make sure we can take care of it at minimum standards to ensure safety and health of people who enjoy that park.
And I will clarify, I did read through all the correspondence and from the city and with regard to the resolutions. I just want to be clear that while it was being maintained by the Fairgrounds, and I agree they did cease, decided to cease doing that, when I read the resolution, the resolution only stated that Bonner County would assume ownership and maintenance responsibilities. There was, so if, if within the county there were further conversations that ultimately led to making that responsibility to Fairgrounds, whether they agreed or disagreed with that decision at the time, I haven't seen any of that documentation, so I don't know how it ended up that way. I just know that we, the county, under a prior board, accepted ownership and responsibility of the maintenance of that park.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Just, just to be clear, since we don't have the full history of
Sure.
how it ended up as the responsibility for the Fairgrounds of maintenance.
And I want to be clear here is, this is just going to provide the minimum amount of maintenance just for safety and health. As far as the long-term plan, we're going to have to come up with a different estimate for future repairs. So just keep that in mind as we make this decision, is this is only going to be for this season, and it is just minimum maintenance.
And Director, just want to confirm, it looked like from the estimate that the portable toilet would be a handicap version?
That would accommodate everybody, yep.
Yeah, I think that's the solution.
Historically, there were, there was one handicap restroom and one non. And so just to kind of accommodate the most folks with one, this was what we came up with.
I think that's the right solution, to have ADA accessible.
Yep.
And then I do have a harder question. I appreciate the effort that went into this, but considering that we just recently made the decision to stop maintenance for the dog park, and there were costs associated with that, could that not be an offsetting cost to not require a budget adjustment for this fiscal year?
It's kind of a Rob Peter to Pay Paul situation where our guys only have so many hours and they don't get any overtime, so it's just a level of service thing where hypothetically we are now able to, hours-wise, and as far as costs go, we're not really saving anything now. It's just a matter of how much. It's just a matter of how much better or worse, and what level of service can you offer. So we could potentially now, not having Dog Beach on our agenda every week, is we could allow a little bit more time, but there are still costs with real, real fuel sewage, and like, we never rented portable toilets for Dog Beach, so that if the commissioners decide that that's an appropriate way to handle the public's needs, then we will definitely need money for that, though. But, yeah, as far as offsetting time, it's just a matter of how much time we can spend at all of our ramps and just focusing on our needs, so it's, we still need to get the money.
So the Dog Beach maintenance costs were primarily labor associated?
Correct.
Whereas we have some, some other costs here, rental fees and things associated with this request.
Exactly, yep.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
I have no further questions.
All right, thank you.
And I, I will add that auditing and risk has already approved this, and auditing has approved this with the idea that this would come out of contingency funding and go to the following light items in the amounts described.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. That note was in the auditing email.
Yep.
Based on the information before us, I move to Delagie, Parks and Waterways, as custodians of Fairgrounds Park, and a needed increase funds to Parks and Waterways.
Step down and second. And public comment?
Wayne Martin, still resident of Bonner County. Was the property always belonging to the county that the city of Sandpoint built the playground on, or was that part of the city of Sandpoint, their property? Is the first question that I have, and you may have to research on that. The other, because I know it's been talked about, the electrical and the water, has there been any type of estimates done on what the cost of bringing them up to the standard that's required? Electrical, especially if there's any type of shortage or any problems that way, is a great risk to the city or to the county.
Are you referring to electrical and water at the playground?
Right, on the playground. Yes, it's been brought up that they are not totally adequate and all, in previous meetings on budgets and all. Yeah, it's been, it's been mentioned, but if there have not been checks on that, when might estimates been, be done on the cost? I have a concern, because if the city of Sandpoint built it, and it was not done correctly, or it wasn't brought to proper codes because of whatever reason, you know, again.
So we, so the, the county, I don't know all the history of, of the land itself, but the final resolution between the city and the county that I read, the city donated all of the materials and equipment that created the playground park area, and so the county adopted all of that. So we are fully responsible for everything that's there now. So irrespective of the history, we're now the responsible party for everything there. And so if, if there are some things that are potentially concerning, then we need to investigate and figure out if in fact there's a problem, and then, you know, what those costs would be, and how and when that would be addressed, but I'm not aware, I don't recall having heard any specific information about electrical and/or water issues on the playground itself, so that...
I don't know if Director is aware, but...
As, as far as costs go, once we have custodianship, then that's something to dig into. Like I said, the problem is, is while we wait to make a decision for long-term ownership and what potential FY26 budget adjustments would be, the grass is continuing to grow. So like I said, this is a, I want to be very clear that this is just a short-time decision to get us through this season. And then, like I said, if however they decide it today, we'll move forward with cost estimates and see what those repairs are.
And then restroom-wise, are you looking at, looking at what the potential cost of building a permanent restroom facility would be versus, you know, the rental of a porta-potty?
Not at this time. At this time, we're only looking at the
Right.
custodianship, maintenance, for the remainder of this, this season budget year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just a technical question.
I'm sorry, your name, your name for the record, please?
Mike Rose, Bonner County Clerk. I live here. So when we use contingency funds, we're very, very guarded with that use. I, I didn't approve it. Jessica doesn't remember approving it. Did Jessica approve it? Because she doesn't remember approving it. So the email I have says that she would approve it, approve custodianship for parks if these got moved into the line items that I requested.
The use of contingency funds?
Yep.
Okay. Jessica, if you can hear this, if you have anything different, chime in. Okay?
Thanks.
Any additional public question or comment?
So I do have the email. Just a moment, please.
Just a second.
Okay, yeah, because the email states that.
Ann Wilder, Bonner County resident. How much per month is this coming out to that they're taking from the funds?
What was?
How much? How much per month?
Roughly with fuel, time, and porta-potty rental, roughly $400 a month. Like I said, and this is the lowest level of what I think is acceptable for health and safety.
Any further public questions or comments? Seeing none, board deliberation?
So some great questions were brought up, and I appreciate those. Bottom line is, is we have a duty as the county to maintain that park, and it comes with an added expense. And I think at this time, doing the bare minimum, I think is probably the right thing to do, until we figure out, maybe we can have negotiations in the future, again, with the Fairgrounds, to see if they, whatever can be worked out in the future for them to go back and keep maintaining it. But this time, it's our responsibility, it's going to cost us money, and I don't see any way around our duties and our obligations.
I agree, we have a responsibility, and there's a challenging dynamic with the Fair Board at this time that we're trying to address, and until that's resolved, we do not have the legal authority to require them to do anything. Therefore, if we don't make this decision, then there will be no maintenance performed based on their decision. And I don't think that's an acceptable condition, and I think this is a reasonable amount for us. It's a, it's a small amount to pull out of the contingency to, to address the short-term issue until we have a, a long-term plan that we can account for in the 26 fiscal year budget, so.
I agree.
I agree with you. Any further deliberation?
No.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
And based on the conversation, if you would, please follow up on investigating if there are any safety concerns with water, power, or anything else that's obvious.
Yep. Now, now that this has been decided, I'll get in touch with Mark Knapp. Like I said, Mark Knapp has been super supportive through this. Like I said, we, we both answer to different boards, so now that it's in my court, we'll move forward.
Thank you very much.
You're the custodian.
That's it.
All right. District One Commissioner update. I'll be brief. Other than our continued focus on initial meetings on budgets, you guys have heard a lot of conversation about that in past weeks, so I won't get into a lot of the detail there, other than to continue to say that it's greatly appreciated, all of the department heads and the electeds that are working with us to provide information that we're asking for, the detail that we're asking for, and the way that we're looking at adjusting the budget to create more consistency and clarity and alignment of dollar values, so we know where dollars are anticipated to be spent, so we can better track them in the future. We want to develop a plan and work to a plan, and then if we've missed a part of the plan, we'll actually know why, because we documented it, and then we can be accountable to that. So I think we're moving in a really good direction, and again, I thank everyone for their efforts with that, and their patience, because it takes a lot of time to go through all this in multiple iterations. Also want to mention that at 1:30 this afternoon, we'll be holding the board slash planning workshop that you're invited to attend. It's going to have a focus on our county codes and ordinance associated with cell towers or telecommunications towers. This is directly in response to the House Bill 180 that was passed in the legislature this past session, that goes into effect on July 1st, that changes the laws around local authority on the review and denial or approval of conditional use permits associated with cell towers. And so we have work to do, and we're going to start that work during this workshop at 1:30 this afternoon. The other thing I'll say, and I have to be very careful about how I say this, is I, and I know the board in general, has been receiving a lot of communications about a court decision to remand back to the Board of County Commissioners, the decision about the bike park venue in Sagal. We are not legally allowed to discuss any details of that conditional use permit application that will be coming back to the board for a decision, so I'd like the public to please understand that we can, as a county, receive your comments and put them in the record, but we cannot respond to them as far as having any kind of a dialogue about the details. So if you're trying to come in and have a conversation, or call and have a discussion, please understand that we're not allowed to do that, and so we have to politely let you know that we have to decline to talk about it. Otherwise, that becomes ex parte communication, which would violate the public hearing that will happen later on this summer for that particular file. So we appreciate everyone's passion and interest, and please just understand that we're not trying to be rude, but we need to follow the law on how we address this issue as it comes back before the board. And then I was also requested, just before the meeting, by the sheriff to announce that this Thursday, there's a jail and justice system assessment that's being conducted this week, and this Thursday, June 12th, at 9:00 a.m., there's a town hall meeting for the findings of that assessment as, and to have public participation. It's going to be held at the Cootney Community Church, located at 477 North Main Street in Cootney. If you have questions or seek more information about that, please contact the sheriff. But if you would like to be a part of that town hall meeting and discussion where the findings are presented and public input is welcome, please plan to attend that meeting. And that's all I have for mine. Commissioner Williams was not able to be present for the meeting today, so we don't have, unless she's online, that I'm unaware of. We don't have a District Two report, so District Three.
So, excuse me, last week I attended the Idaho Association of Counties Summer Conference, which was held in Coeur d'Alene this year. The nice thing about the IAC is they provide a lot of great training for a lot of different electives, commissioners, clerks, and so some of the classes that I attended were levy process training, Board of Equalization procedures, which is going to come in helpful here in a few more weeks, open meeting best practices. Ph.D. had a presentation statewide for governance and funding, and there's some questions coming up with Panhandle Health District. Some of the questions coming up are whether or not they're going to keep providing their clinical services, if the counties really are utilizing those. Our county really isn't utilizing those services very much. It's possible that they might turn that over to a private sector, such as like Cootney, what is that?
Kynectu?
Kynectu Health? Thank you.
Maybe?
Yes. And even on the septic system side of things, we as counties of Idaho have some things to look at, because we don't necessarily have to use Panhandle Health Districts to do our septic systems. We can actually create our own, and I don't know if Bonner County has ever had one or not, but a county health district under the umbrella of the county, and hire out either in-house engineers or sub it out to other engineers for septic systems. So the question starts kind of arising, what is the purpose of Panhandle Health District? If the county can actually go and bring that all in-house, other than, like I said, the clinical services, which would be from private, private sector. So something for commissioners to start thinking about, what the benefits and rewards would be to that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're going to go into public comment, and before we do, just a couple of quick reminders. Please state your name and residency for the record. Please direct your comments and questions to the board, and not someone else in the room or out of the room. And, not a requirement, but just a request, please remember to treat others in the way you'd like to be treated, with how you choose to use your words. Thank you. So with that, public comment? Mr. Martin?
Sure. Age before beauty, right?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident. I'm going to start with Fairgrounds. Mike?
Yes.
Want to, thank you for bringing up about the fire hydrants, because I wanted to bring that up, because they're looking at replacing the four fire hydrants. When they were looking at, the commissioners were looking at putting the Fairground Campground out in the corner, they were planning on water, running water from a water line in the back of the Fairgrounds along the road out to a new housing development. That is something that should be looked at, and I almost guarantee what Mike brought up as to the water being restricted, coming onto the property, because it's after the fire, the meter, that, that's going to be a big problem. I do want to mention about the $4,000. I'm not sure which way that's going to happen, but they're wanting an additional $20,000 to take care of the fire hydrants, so that's $60,000 if it's all granted to them. That's a lot of money, and with the problems that have happened before, you folks have asked them to provide a five-year plan. They still have not done that, and that was requested back before when Luke Amet was still here as the chair to do that, and that has not moved. And the current chair was on that board at that time. I do have a question as to the Fair Book file. How did it get corrupted? Again, wasn't able to answer or ask questions during that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, could you?
On the Fairground book?
Oh.
Their book?
Yes, the digital book.
It was, well, it was stated that it was corrupted. I'd like to know why, how that got corrupted. It should not have if it was done correctly, unless there was an intent. I appreciate your comment about the ads, because it, the ads should reflect enough to be able to at least offset the cost of the book, and that has not, is not being done. You don't want to make it too high that nobody will do ads. The Fairgrounds does run rodeo, horse camp, Renaissance Fair, there's camping, cornhole competitions, there's additional events, so there's money coming in. I don't know if you folks ever see where or how much of that money comes in, but it is a concern for my part. And I do want to mention roads and bridges, because you had that meeting yesterday. I happen to be from Southern California, a bad word, but the amusement park that I worked with, we had hinged signs, so that the signs stayed up. We would send people out, they would unclip it, the sign would fall down, and when it was finished being used, it was put back up. And if you're concerned about somebody coming in, unclipping it, put in a padlock or something on that, so it stays up, stays down, and all. So I appreciate, again, you looking at, you know, costs, and that is a, a comment, a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Dupree. Back for seconds. John Dupree, a resident of the county. You mentioned a 1:30 meeting today. Where is that happening?
I'm going to look at staff. Is that in this room or downstairs?
In this room, all right.
Thank you for clarifying.
May I have permission to pray for Commissioner Williams in my public comment?
You may do what you would like.
All right.
I'll do comments, sir.
Well, I don't have any specifics to pray about. Well, all right. Father God, we come to you right now, thanking you for who you are. Father God, we come to you right now thanking you for who you are and making us who you made us to be. Lord God, Asia needs your healing hand. Lord God, please touch her, bring her to good health again. She's an incredible person and our county misses her presence. So Lord, just be the great healer and thank you for being who you are. In Jesus's name, amen.
Online. Doug or Maureen Patterson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay. This is Maureen Patterson, resident of Bonner County. And I do have either Wendy or Doug additional minutes for something I'd like to say. So the Idaho Republican Party platform preamble states that each person's dignity, freedom, ability, and responsibility must be honored. I was at the Bonner County Central Committee meeting of May 21st where they presented the resolution to censure Asia Williams and Brian Domke. The resolution was sent out just one hour before the meeting, so we had already left home when it came out. The meeting started at 6:30 PM and it wasn't until around 8:00 PM that the resolution was presented. Not excusing them, but many were probably tired and ready to go home. There was a motion to postpone till the next meeting and it was suggested that the accused, Asia and Brian, be able to present their case before the committee. The motion was defeated. In the bylaws for the Bonner County Central Committee, Article 11, Section 2, Bonner County Republican Central Committee shall establish all policies and functions of the Republican Party on the county level as long as they are not inconsistent with the rules and regulations of the Idaho Republican Party and Idaho Code. But Article 20, Section 3 of the Rules and Regulations of the Idaho Republican Party State, give fair consideration to alleged violations and provide a meaningful opportunity for the official to be heard. Unquote. No one at this meeting was reminded of this very important Idaho Republican Party rule. I fault the chair and the parliamentarian for this. Many had not been at the special meeting of April 21st in which Brian explained he felt he should have had emergency in the motion at the March 25th business meeting. Consequently, the chairman gave what I thought was, the chairman of the central committee gave what I thought was his very negative opinion and summary of that meeting. Afterwards, having listened to this April 21st meeting myself, I had quite a different opinion of it. It was not an open meeting violation. I also had an opportunity to ask Brian about his view of minor land divisions. He said it is the unsafe conditions that they cause such as the lack of providing adequate access for emergency services, lack of fire protection measures, lack of confirming adequate septic capability, and other such considerations. MLDs allowed land to be divided prior to confirming these important safety considerations would or could be provided in the future. A county commissioner's responsibility for safety to his county is paramount. Brian had been a commissioner just over two months and was learning the ropes of a multifaceted and very complex position. He previously had extensive experience with land use and environmental hazards related to them being a professional landscape architect and in his own landscape architect business. He had also been on the Bonner County Natural Resource Committee and was chairman of his planning and zoning subarea plan committee. His viewpoint on safety concerns may be richer and more complex than the average citizen. Both Asia and Brian are known for their honesty, integrity, and intellect. In an Idaho Code 74204, under open meeting law, it states, "An emergency is a situation involving injury or damage to persons or property or the likelihood of such injury, damage, or loss when the notice requirements of this section would make such a notice impractical or increase the likelihood or severity of such injury, damage, or loss. And the reason for the emergency is stated at the outset of the meeting." The emergency reason was stated at the outset of the March 25th business meeting. But at the special April meeting, Brian confessed to not mentioning the reasons for declaring it an emergency in his motion. Consequently, the minutes were also missing this and he apologized. There are so many details a commissioner has to remember, but this should never have risen to the level of a censure or accusation of an open meeting violation. Brian and Asia's opportunity to be heard was shut down, going against both Idaho Code and Idaho Republican Party rules. I now point my finger at you, Bonner County Republican Central Committee. What are you going to do about this glaring error? Please remember your preamble that each person's dignity, freedom, ability, and responsibility must be honored.
Maureen? If you haven't concluded, I just want to remind you, please to direct your comments to the board and not to other entities or people.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, when I'm pointing my finger, sorry. I can also send a digital copy if you'd like. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
I'll reclaim my. And I brought Catherine Ferig for the record, Bonner County resident. And I bought copies of Maureen's letter that she just read and it's been entered in the record. So I brought those in for her.
Thank you.
A, there was no public meeting violation. I'm sorry, Maureen, are you done?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay.
Please, please mute your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
There was no public meeting violation. BCRCC violated their own policies and procedures, didn't advise Asia or Brian that they could speak or try to refute this censure. And it's ridiculous that the BCRCC doesn't say a word about Rhino Jim Woodward, but they'll censure these two. I know it's a lot like.
Thank you. Again, please, if we could keep the comments to the board, but thank you.
God, he's not on the board.
Thank you, please. Please, please. Do we have any additional public comment? Teresa Heisner?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Teresa Heisner, Priest River. I just wanted to thank Maureen and Doug for taking the time to write that letter. I think the majority of conservative in this county that are paying attention agree with them. So I wanted to thank them personally for presenting the letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? And again, I understand people are passionate about topics. I just please ask you to keep your comments directed to the board. Mr. Bowman?
Good morning, Dave Bowman, Bonner County. I just, I'll second what Teresa said, that's all I have.
And thank you. Ms. Welly? You're still muted.
Yes, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
We can now.
I just want to thank Maureen for that wonderful letter. It was very accurate and I could not agree with she, Kathy, Dave, and Teresa more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Doug and Maureen, your hand is still raised. Does that, does Doug have a comment?
Sorry, no.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the room? Do we have any final? You're still, you're, okay. All right. It is 9:56 and this meeting is adjourned.